Call the August eighteenth Plan Commission Study Session to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Imig is not here tonight. I'll call Roll. Mr. Jarvis.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Kokon.
Here.
Mr. Rack.
Here.
And Mr. Anderson is here. First item of business, forty-one degree North Tavern formerly known as Northwood Falls. General location, eighty-one oh one Wicker Avenue, Eagle River, Northwoods addition. Petitioner Silken and Shivangi Patel requests US forty-one Commercial Corridor Overlay District Development Plan Review. Step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Silken Patel. Address eighty-one oh one Wicker Avenue.
Shivangi Patel, eighty-one oh one Wicker Avenue.
Patrick Edwards, eight-one oh one Wicker Avenue.
All right. You want to tell us what we're looking to do here?
So we took over the property about a few months ago.
Can you speak right into the...
Sir.
You can adjust that up or down, but you need to speak right into it because this is being televised.
Sure. Is it good enough now?
Yeah.
We took over the property about three months ago, three or four months ago. We did a remodeling. We finally opened last week. Friday was a grand ribbon cutting ceremony and Saturday was our first working day. We had a signage that was previously at the property, which was pretty much in bad shape. You can see that. Luckily it did not fall over the forty-one. We removed it out and now we are trying to get the sign built again according to the ordinances that are there right now.
So you can have a LED message board on there?
Yes, mostly for just informations about specials and stuff like that.
Upcoming events and such?
Yeah.
Does that size meet the sign ordinance?
It does, actually. I just want to make a note, the base could be included, so it could be ten feet tall by eight feet wide.
Okay. And where's this fencing going to be?
So this fence is mostly covers the water pond area towards a porch area where customers cannot walk from the parking lot directly into the...
So it'll be from the south, south end of the building to the property line?
Exactly. Not to the property line, but from the porch directly to the first tree area where the pond intersects with the tree.
Okay.
That blocks the access from customers to leave the property with anything in their hands and there's only one way to get in is through the hostess from the front.
Yeah.
So we can monitor the ins and outs. And this is mostly for ATC requirements also. This is more fulfilling their requirements for extra safety.
Okay. All right. Doing a rough over the patio?
Yes, so this project is still under engineering, but this idea is to do a pergola type of patio where it protects us from rain, you know, small showers here or there and it's enclosed completely and it's openable also at a good weather day. So we can slide the... On the, well, on the opposite side, you see it's clear, but it's supposed to be all glass. So you can have that nature coming in while protecting through the weather and it's openable completely as a good weather and it can close it also at the same time.
So if that was able to be closed fully, that would most likely need to be sprinkled?
Yes, sir.
We just found that out with the last meeting. We are working with the fire department to figure out the requirements for that.
Questions?
The sign itself, with them being up on a hill, when you're coming south on forty-one, they need the sign to be there to be clear designation for the entrance ways.
It needs the ordinance.
Right, so...
And the fence, I agree with the fence, you know, and you can't argue with ABC.
It's better since we know who's coming in and who's going out.
Yeah, and then the pergola type thing, you know, like I said, the fire department's going to want that sprinkled if it's going to be able to be closed. It looks good. It looks nice.
Thank you. We'll be working with the fire department, make sure that we have the rules, you know, completely in there. And there is a company who's doing it, so they'll be doing the, performing the work with that.
All right. Those were the only three items?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Yeah, get with the fire department and your engineer and have them, you know, coordinate what needs to be done on that and...
I just have a quick question. The sign and the fence will have a higher priority because it's more, this is pretty much because of the engineering for the sprinkler system and everything, it might take a little bit longer.
Right.
But the process is already started with that, you know, in there.
Yeah, so you want to advertise for, to get in front of us so you can get your sign and your fence done and then...
Add on to that.
Yeah, once the engineering, because I realize engineering can take some time on a project like that. Do we know advertising? When were you looking to come for public hearing?
I'm open any day, whenever it's available.
The next meeting's September eighth.
Yes, we can make it.
All right. We can address, you know, the first two issues to get you going on that, get your sign and your fence.
Just, I want to leave it out. On September eighth, I myself will not be here, but my wife and my manager will be here. They will be able to answer any questions also.
The two items, you know, that we're looking at here, the sign and the fence, nobody has any issues with.
Okay.
It's just, you know, the pergola is going to be something that's going to have to be figured out, but to get those two items, you know, go ahead and we can get you...
Thank you very much.
On the eighth.
Thank you.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, Crossroads YMCA Expansion formerly known as Jack's Warehouse. General location, two-twenty-one US forty-one Omni forty-one First Edition, part of the east, eight-hundred-and-fifty-four point ninety-two feet of Lot One. Petitioner, Crossroads YMCA, represented by DVG Team Inc., Russ Posen, PE, requests US forty-one Commercial Corridor Overlay District Development Plan Review. Wait, when you say DVG Team, you mean team?
Well, not all about team. So I'm Russ Posen with DVG Team Inc., eleven-fifty-five Trotwine Road, Crown Point, Indiana. We're the civil engineers on this, so I'll kind of coordinate a little bit of the site development stuff, but I do have the YMCA CEO here and the architects. The architects are going to kind of get into a little more detail of the, you know, what the building is doing from a facade perspective and actually, you know, maybe coordinate some of the renderings that you have in front of you and I believe also attached. But Jay Buckmaster will introduce himself and, you know, get a little detail of really where the Y is right now, you know, as far, because obviously it started off as a couple other developments.
Evening, everybody. Jay Buckmaster, President, CEO of the Crossroads YMCA, ninety-eight oh one Connecticut Drive, Crown Point. Thank you for your time today. This is phase three. So we started a couple of years ago after we took over that partnership with Omni. So the first phase, we really renovated the hallway, the front entrance, those types of things. Phase two, we did a little bit of an expansion along the upper mezzanine area and now phase three, we would be moving into the old Jack's side and it really is to address a couple of things. It's been a successful, we think, you know, a great addition to the Shererville community and so we're excited to be able to expand some of the areas that we'll see as an expanded fitness center. So moving the fitness that is currently now where it is into Jack's, expansion of the basketball courts, volleyball, pickleball areas, and then just some general studios moving around, expansion of our family locker rooms, renovation of some other locker rooms. And so we're excited to be able to continue to serve, you know, the community of Shererville by expanding this facility.
So I'll get in and just kind of talk a little bit from a site perspective before we get the renderings here. So to put a perspective, if you're starting from the west going east, so the west portion of what is the YMCA property, it's that first hatching there that looks a little bit spotty. So what we're going to do is we're going to mill off that area, all that surface course, and then we're going to put, you know, new asphalt surface course on it. And along with that, we're going to shift the pedestrian path from where that guard rail is south and make it a concrete seven-foot wide walk that goes right into our addition. You know, we're going to do a fifteen thousand square foot building addition kind of in the southwest where you see that existing Jack's sign, you know, Jack's building. So it's going to kind of bump out a little bit. So we're going to get a better pedestrian path, safer, because it'll be south of the travelway. Along with that travelway, we're going to restripe that area. If you guys ever, you know, taken that path, it's really wide and kind of, you know, hard to decide where to go. So we're really focusing on that. We're going to narrow that drive aisle down twenty-five, two-twenty-five feet, which is more than enough for two-way traffic, but it's just a little more focused, you know, get that restriped. And then we get to our, we're going to get you, so obviously narrow you down, get you a little bit more, you know, a little safer and, you know, a little more conscious of the pedestrians. We're going to get to the new building addition and you're going to see, kind of once you get there, we're going to focus on our operation. You know, the YMCA is really good at operating parking lots. You know, we have to get people dropped off. That's a big part of their business is drop-off, you know, whether it's the elderly or for kids, for tournaments, you know, drop-off is a key. So we actually focused on two areas where the, kind of a little bit north, where the, kind of the connection where that kind of Franciscan entrance is, is we're going to create a drop-off area along, in the middle, you can see where to put a flag and you'll see that on a rendering, you know, a flag in a sidewalk. So it's a better drop-off area, removing all that parking that's there so that we have a better, a safer aspect. And then going south here, kind of on the southwest, is you can see all that striping and kind of separation with drive aisles. Again, we're creating a better drop-off area for the facility, you know, so people can have a better understanding of where to go. The rest of the parking on the south, you know, this is in disrepair, so we're cleaning that up, doing a little better drainage, putting some landscape islands there. Again, better for the visual aspect of where you're supposed to drive. You know, we'll have a fountain kind of in the southwest. It's kind of a triangular area there. From an engineering perspective, you know, I'm working with, I'm going to rework with NICE to, you know, talk about the drainage and whatnot, but from a site perspective, it's really a lot of cleanup and then better operation. Overall, we are reducing parking by what's currently there on the YMCA property. We're actually seeking a variance. But from a functionality perspective, we definitely feel when we present to the BZA that we have more than enough parking. The way that your ordinance reads this whole facility, just because of the occupancy load, because it's a big building and has, you know, a lot of high occupancy, it required seven-hundred-and-thirty parking spaces. That's more than any, actually even the Crown Point Y, which is one of the highest memberships in the nation, has way more parking, you know, that's a lot more parking than what we provide there. On this facility, on our site, we are sharing access with Franciscan. So, and they're at different hours. You know, they're done at five PM. The YMCA ramps up at five PM. So total parking that we have access to is about five-hundred-and-ninety spaces, even though about three-hundred-and-sixty-nine are on our, we'll call it the lot, but we share. And that parking is actually very similar to what is in Crown Point. And again, that's, you know, one of the largest in the nation and they have more than enough parking. This facility's never had any parking problems, so we're pretty confident that when we go to the BZA that we'll go get that obviously approved. But I want you as the Plan Commission to be fully aware of, from a site perspective, what we're doing. So that's kind of the site part. I'm going to let the architects, I want to get them, you know, the renderings so you can really see the, you know, the really, the real prettiness of this building. I'll let them introduce you as you get the renderings.
I'm Justin DeFields. I'm the...
It won't be a part of the plan set. It'll be like the rendering part. That's landscape. That's elevation. You want to go there's probably another one?
One more?
There we go.
Does this have all of them included?
This has all of them.
Okay. I'm Justin DeFields.
Like, sir?
Sorry. I'm Justin DeFields. I'm the project manager here at Elvatus that's working on this YMCA project. From a material standpoint, a lot of what you're seeing here matches what's existing and what's defined in the ordinances, trying to keep masonry for the first floor and then having storefront into this new entry into the YMCA. The existing entry is off towards the left. There's kind of a long hallway before you get into the YMCA space itself. So this really serves to bring the YMCA entrance closer to the rest of the program and closer, you know, bring the front desk closer to where people are parking in the space. If you can go to the next image. So kind of describing the front here, we're really replacing that Jack signage on the front of the building with a YMCA sign. It's really a one-for-one swap from a size perspective. And then we're looking to replace really all of the exterior materials on that existing pre-engineered metal building. So we're getting all new metal panels all the way around that building that you would see from the parking lot. So if you can go to the next image here. So really wrapping all the way around this right side, we're looking to breathe some new life into this Jack's building that was originally built in the seventies. I think there's one more. Sure. Is there anything I'm missing?
No, no, you did a good job.
Okay.
Questions? It's come a long way. I remember playing racquetball there in like nineteen-seventy-eight when I was in high school, when it was on me. So it's come a long way.
I was eighty-seven. But it was racquetball.
What's your timetable on this project?
We are looking, because we've submitted engineering, we've submitted landscaping, so we're looking to have the, be at the September eighth meeting and they are anxious to actually start construction, the inside part first, which is a lot of gutting, a lot of demo of the inside, but permit-wise, we want to start on the exterior really this year if we can.
So are you on the BZA agenda for this month?
We have submitted for BZA agenda. We are.
Okay.
Obviously, we have the public notices out, so we're looking, it's the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
We'll be on for BZA.
Looks nice. Questions, comments, concerns?
Just a quick question, please, if you will. So I'm going back to basically the main entrance through on that original where it was all shaded.
Yep.
So you got the main entrance coming off of forty-one. Those crosswalks, if you're repaving the parking lot, would you entertain maybe doing a raised crosswalk to kind of slow the traffic down coming in? Because inevitably, you're going to have that parent who is late getting their kid for a drop-off that's going to want to fly through there. You get what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Kind of like in a safety aspect, because then I look at one of your, I think it would be one, two, like the third picture, this one here. I look at this one and it just seems like it's wide open getting through there. Maybe just something to keep them from, you know, drifting around the drop-off. Would you entertain...
So, so actually what, if you don't mind, we would, we actually, they do love to keep that drive aisle safe. We would actually prefer like push buttons, pedestrian crosswalks.
Something to draw attention to.
Something like that. We've kind of been, we've actually proposing that in another project with the Y.
We have that in Hammond right now and it works really well. A couple of spots there.
Yeah. It really, it's...
It just, when I was looking at it, seemed wide open for somebody to just come flying through.
Sure. Yeah, we are narrowing the whole drive aisle for sure, but I will definitely make a note of that is to do some more pedestrian signals. Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Other questions, comments? Anything from staff?
Nope.
Looks good. Then no other concerns? Nothing from staff? Then we'll see you on...
September eighth? Yep. Question, just logistics size. Do I advertise for that, for that meeting or no?
Yes.
Yes, we do? Okay.
Well, it's in the overlay. Maybe not. I'll let you know.
Thank you.
I don't think so.
I'll double check. I don't want to miss anything. I don't want to get in trouble. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Next item, Fountain Park Subdivision Commercial. Proposed floor and decor formerly known as Ashley Furniture. General location, fifteen sixteen, fifteen thirty, US forty-one, Fountain Park Subdivision, Lot One, re-subdivision of Lot Five and part of Lot Eight. Petitioner, floor and decor, Kaitlin Pipkin, Development Manager, represented by Toringa Engineering, requests a US forty-one Commercial Corridor Overlay District Development Plan Review. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Don Toringa. I'm with Toringa Engineering. I am here this evening representing, as you said, Floor and Decor. They're out of Atlanta, Georgia, and they could not make the meeting this evening. I do have with me the owner of the property, not with Floor and Decor, but the owner of the building, Mr. Jeff Keith. He's in the back there. Anyway, what they're proposing to do here is the old Ashley Furniture Store, which has been mostly vacant for a number of years. There is a DBAT, I believe it is called, in the southern portion of it. DBAT is moving out and Floor and Decor is going to completely remodel the interior of the building. With that, they are doing some basic modifications to the front of the building with the drive-in and the new, and obviously the different sign. I did submit a minimal landscaping plan because there's, this is almost all asphalt and there are a couple of areas where landscaping can be done. Other than that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
So they're going to take the whole building? DBAT will be gone?
DBAT is being moved out, yes.
Yeah, I know that building's been a challenge because of the height and, you know, inside, so...
Yeah.
Glad you're finding somebody that can go in there. Questions? The landscaping that's at the north end there, is that all going to be kind of low height? Because, you know, there's...
There are three trees, I believe, three or four trees that are currently there and those are not going to be removed. The rest of it is pretty overgrown, so it's going to be, yes, low shrubs because there is an issue with seeing around the corner there.
Right.
That is correct.
Yeah, I've been in there once or twice, that lot.
Yes.
You meet the ordinance on signage?
They did submit a signage package. Did you get that, Mr. Gorman?
I did get, I did get that, but I haven't reviewed it yet. So I know the main sign on the east side of the building would meet it because it's a one-to-one. I'm not sure if that's in a signed district or not, but that's some of the details we've got to look at. So if it's one-to-one, the big sign's fine, but I don't know about the smaller signs you have on the side for curb stop and stuff, curb pickup. I think we just got that today, or at least I just got it today.
I'm sure whatever, whatever, you know, the town planners and Mr. Gorman come up with, Floor and Decor would be happy to meet it if it doesn't meet the current ordinances.
Well... Looks like quite a few of those signs are just temporary. Am I correct? Other than the curb side, you know, your...
I believe that's correct, yes.
Your grand opening, your coming soon, those are, you know, temporary things.
Mr. Toringa, a quick question if I may. The speed bumps that they had in the parking lot before, you're not putting those back, correct?
I don't believe they are, no.
Hope not.
I think those were, I don't know the real reason that they were there, but I would assume it was because it was vacant and people were going through there pretty quickly. So I don't know. But I don't think there's any plan to put them back, no.
Yeah, mostly everybody drove around them anyways.
Other questions? The back of the building, by the pond.
Yes.
Is that gonna be power washed? There's some nasty black...
I could ask them.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, again, Mr. Keith is...
Where the water comes off the roof over the years, it, it's really discolored, the, the building.
I'm just very happy to see somebody going back in there.
If you could please just introduce yourself?
Yeah, Jeff Keith. I'm the managing owner of the property. We've had many different proposals come in here. They just, we didn't feel like they were the right quality for the building. So it's really great to have, you know, Floor and Decor is a large publicly traded company that's on the level of like a Home Depot or Menards, and, you know, that type of quality. So we're very happy that our patience is hopefully fin- finally paying off with this.
Yeah, looks, looks good to me. Any comments, questions, board members? Good.
No.
I'm good with it.
Looks good. Glad, glad we're gonna get it filled up again.
Very good.
Gonna refresh the parking lot a little bit?
Yes. The, the striping is pretty worn out, so they're gonna redo the striping, yes. And they're going to change it a little bit. They're gonna, I think they are, in the front there, there are four handicap spaces. They're gonna be spaced out a little bit differently, so... Do meet current ADA requirements. I don't know that they meet ADA requirements currently.
Okay.
Especially going across the front of there and some of the always arrows would help a lot.
Okay. I will mention that also.
Anything from staff? What's your timeline?
As quick as possible. If we can get into the next meeting.
September, September 8th? Yep. September 8th is the next public, because September 1st, which would normally be our public hearing, is Labor Day, so we pushed it back a week.
Okay, good. So that, we, we're required to advertise, correct? Is that correct or no?
It's the overlay district.
I don't think so.
Yeah, the overlay district, I don't believe has to be...
Yeah, I don't think so.
Yeah.
I'll let you know, Don.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, item B. 1427 Austin Avenue. Bob Morris, proposed Cedar Heights addition. General location, 1427 Austin Avenue. Petitioner, House Smart Inc. Bob Morris, request a one-lot R2 residential subdivision.
Again, Don Toringa with Toringa Engineering. This was actually something that was done by Stuart Allen of Toringa Surveying. And he called me this evening and asked, since I was going to be here, if I would represent. Basically, what it is, is this is ministerial in the fact that it is meets and bounds, and he wants to add on with a building on the property, and I believe he needs to subdivide in order to do that. So that's what we're, there's no elevation changes, there's no major...
Just bring it into a lot of, a lot of record?
That is correct, yes.
Not gonna tear it down and build one like the, one to the north?
I don't think so, no.
Questions? Questions? Pretty straightforward. It's been there for...
Exactly.
Fifty years? Anything from staff?
Yes, that's about right. Fifty years or more.
Yeah. All right. You're looking to, that one would have to be advertised, correct? Yeah.
Okay.
So...
Very good.
I don't know what your timeline is, but that one...
Same thing, as soon as possible. So I'm sure that Nancy can get the advertisement out before the September 8th meeting, so...
All righty.
Should be fine.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And, under correspondence, Plant Commission Public Meeting and Plant Commission Study Sessions scheduled for September 1st, 2025, has been rescheduled to September 8th, 2025. And with that, we are adjourned.